Two o'clock, people start coming out of these doors and rearranging furniture to get ready for a three o'clock meeting. You see, they start to hover a little bit and wait for the say adjourned and then the microphones start getting unplugged and then...
And then we move. Well, we'll get, no, this is the last one, so we'll start the meeting and back to the work session, June 19, 2018, and legislative platform 2019, and I have Vern P. Crawford, and I'm sorry.
Megan Fay.
Megan Fay, welcome, welcome.
Well, I want to thank both Vern and Megan for being here today. They are our lobbyists, governmental consultants, if you will, for Capital Cities, and we thought it would be a good thing to do to start looking at our priorities for the legislative platform for 2019. We know that we're early, session will be later this year, we have an election to go through, but it's never too early to start thinking of some things that we need to do because if we get an opportunity to talk to some of the people that we think will be there next year, we ought to be able to discuss it with them. Florida School Board Association will start picking up some ideas for a platform by the end of July, which is a full month earlier than we did things last year, although we know that we're later this year, but we want to be able to tweak that, and so Megan and Vern and I chatted last week along with Superintendent about really kind of giving an overview of the things that we think we accomplished this past year and perhaps looking at things that we want to do next year. So with that, I will leave it to you, Vern P. Crawford.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to first of all say that Ron LaFase expresses his regrets, he had a conflict, could not be here today, but I would like to take a moment to introduce Megan Fay, who I know that you have met, but maybe take a moment to explain her, a bit of her Vita, if you will, but she is with Capital City, she joined the firm back in April, I believe it was, and is a very, very welcome addition. So Megan?
So, happy to be here, thank you for having me, and I joined Capital City in April of this year after working for Governor Scott for about five years, most recently as Deputy Chief of Staff. In that role, I oversaw the Department of Education, and so I do have a background in education policy. I've also worked in legislative affairs and several other areas. So I'm an attorney, and I went to Florida State College of Law and the University of Florida, so, so both.
You're a nice balance for the board.
And I've been working with Vern over the past few weeks, getting up to speed on your legislative issues, so I'm looking forward to working with you, representing you at the state level.
Wonderful, thanks for coming.
So we're pleased that you'll have a three-person team as we go into the 2019 session and certainly the weeks before that. We thought that Megan might want to review briefly some of the actions that we have in terms of our local priorities, I'll touch upon the state. Hopefully you have on your desk is a sheet that we sort of annotated over the weekend with that. I do want to suggest to the Board and Superintendent, if you're willing, that we sort of follow what we did last year in the sense that what we work on today would be hopefully to get a consensus from the Board that we would then bring back August, September perhaps, for formal vote. I think as Jane indicated, that the state issues, we do have a July submission date to FSBA, so we'd be probably submitting those noting that these are pending approval, but we've got to meet that deadline. But the suggestion that we have is to work this through and then have it brought back to the Board, but then somewhere in December, early January, look at where we are to see if you want to make any changes, given the fact that we have an election, given the fact that we've got some significant issues, and obviously we will have a new governor, which may have a definite impact on what we wish to propose. So what we're looking at now at this point would be the local issues would give us a chance, specifically Megan and Ron really, to start working with legislative staff during the summer because they do work year-round. Secondly, in terms as far as the state or regional issues, would give us a chance to where we can submit these both to the Coalition as well as the FSBA, the Superintendent's Association, which has been asking for some thoughts, and the Greater Florida Consortium, which will be meeting in September. So if that's okay with you as a sort of a general outline?
Just for clarification, you said you would recommend this Board do a formal vote October?
We...
Or did you say September?
I think what we did, last year we brought it before the Board as an agenda item in September.
Okay.
I would like, I don't know what the schedule is exactly as far as August, September, but I would hope no later than the beginning of September.
Okay, just want to make sure I noted that.
If that's doable.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll be glad to be there to help answer any questions that you all might have at that point, all right? Megan, you want to hit the locals?
Sure. So the first priority that we're proposing is a continuation of a priority from last year, which was the summer learning academies. I think that the goal would be to seek the remainder of the initial appropriations asked from last year, I think it was a little over $2 million, $500,000 was secured, so the goal would be to seek the remaining 1.525 million to continue expanding that program.
Can you speak to the $500,000 that was allocated in the current session? Before we broke for lunch, we had a budget overview and the topic of that allocation and the likelihood that it will be funded?
Sure, I think you're referring to the $500,000 that was tied to FEMA reimbursement.
That is correct.
So there were a number of items in the final version of the budget that was passed this past session tied to FEMA reimbursement, and it's my understanding that Ron LaFase has spoken to the Director of Emergency Management in Tallahassee and that there is no concern about the timeline for receiving those funds, and that those line items that were budgeted that way should plan on spending that money in this fiscal year.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Any comments on that, any thoughts, everyone good with that continuing? Okay, that was pretty seamless.
The next item is the voluntary VPK funding initiative, which I think that last year the discussion was to raise the level of funding up to the same amount as the K-3 funding program. The kind of consensus on this one, after I think doing some more research, was that the cost, when multiplied out, it became cost prohibitive, and not sure if that's something that, you know, the Board wants to continue to push this coming session.
We looked at this both from a, can we do a pilot versus statewide, and the feeling especially since you've got the Florida Education Finance Program as an equity piece of legislation as well as VPK, they really did not, they, it's largely legislative staff but also members of the chairs of the committees, did not like doing something for one district when in fact others might want it, and given the situation with our financial picture that we had both this current year and then what they're projecting, they just felt the cost is prohibitive, not that anybody didn't like the idea, it's a money issue at this point.
Go ahead.
So there are two issues here within the school district as it relates to VPK. First is obviously the allocation per student, and I think as you've articulated, our issue is the same as other providers, be they public or private. Our second issue is we currently have a program for four-year-olds at Gocio Elementary School that is currently being privately funded, and we do not submit for VPK funding. When I talk to our experts in pre-K, and I will tell you that I am not, they will tell you that they would have to significantly alter the instructional program to make it qualify for the current VPK funding. And so if it's not possible to increase the allocation, is there a potential to work with our experts and figure out what it is about VPK versus what they're doing that restricts them and possibly seek a waiver so that we can at least get VPK funding for our current program?
I think we could certainly look into that possibility, and that might, a statewide increase in VPK funding may be something that some of the statewide organizations, the consortium, might be pushing for too, so then it wouldn't be targeted just to Sarasota County.
And I think as you know, the Florida Chamber, for example, with, so they had their conference in Tampa last week, which I was able to get to, very good conference by the way, but one of the things that they have in their 2030 plan is focusing on early childhood education as a priority, so they really had a plan to try to make a push for that next year. The amount of money per student for early, for pre-K at this point is actually $24, $26 less per pupil than it was when they first established the program in 2004, so the legislative entities that are really pro in this, this really works from leadership down are aware of that, and that's a good possibility that we can get that increase, which would, if I can use the phrase, float all boats, but that would help everybody.
And it is about $2,400 per student.
$2,476 current.
$2,476, and to compare that to Massachusetts, and I know we don't often compare ourselves to Massachusetts, but they put $10,000 per student in VPK.
Charlie, I don't understand why we're saying VPK started in 2004.
In 2004.
I mean, I was there in the 90s and we had VPK and it was being funded out of the lottery, and, I mean, that was in the 90s, and then I remember that they folded it into childcare. I mean, this was happening in the early 90s.
Were you talking about the funding?
You are, you're correct. The universal VPK program that was part of the constitutional amendment that passed in 2002, and that's when they established what we were talking about.
Oh, the universal?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's then the cost per student for the three-hour program, at this point, the amount that they appropriate is the $2,400 and something dollars.
Yeah, I would maybe like if somebody could look in the records to see, I mean, we were, you know, when we used the lottery dollars and started the VPK program, we were ahead of other states. I mean, we were supposed to have this wonderful pre-K program, and, you know, I don't know how much we funded it then as compared to, you know, because I know it was a lot more than what the childcare funding was getting, and they were trying to roll it all together, which I said, this is going to be the death of our pre-K program. But I think it was more than what we're paying now and more than this three-hour program. Is there any way that we look back to what it used to be?
I can try to go back and do that through the annals of the Department of Education. My recollection vaguely is that you had your dollars coming in from the lottery, and pre-K was an option that a district could do, so some districts did, some districts didn't. It was not uniform statewide.
We might even be able, I mean, do we have any records going back into the 90s? Because I think we did pre-K in our schools, didn't we?
We could inquire.
I'm not that old, come on, I mean, you know, there's got to be somebody that...
If we looked on the top shelf down in Osprey, maybe there's something related to that, we can certainly inquire.
Maybe there's somebody that still works in our finance department that was here in the 90s.
There's some furniture down there that was there in the 90s, but that's about it.
Some pirate poles. If I had a rubber band, I'd shoot it.
So you got clarification though on that, just to compare the Gocio standards to the VPK standards, to see how that would go? Okay.
If we get staff to talk, I think with Megan or us, we'll be glad to try to see what the situation is.
Okay. The next one.
So the next item is in reference to the workforce, the workforce waiver cap, which is currently at 8%, and I believe this was an item that was on the legislative priority list last year. It turned out where Sarasota is not currently meeting the 8%, and so this is something that I think Superintendent, or you, I think we were in follow-up on some data and look at pursuing this in the future.
Yes, so as that waiver made its way through the legislative process, it was brought to our attention, obviously we're well aware of the 8% waiver capacity, which essentially is the director of the technical college has the ability on his own to waive up to 8% of all tuition, and so we use that for a variety of purposes, but we are not maximizing that waiver. So the answer from staff was, do you need a new waiver when you still have capacity under an existing one? And so we announced in March of last year that we were ourselves essentially implementing a waiver that we would no longer charge parents of Title I students for programs offered on their campus, and so we will check to see, once we get to year-end, what that did in regards to that 8% cap, we'll be able to know if we maximize that.
You're talking about how many people are taking advantage of, what data are we measuring?
Well, it's a dollar, yeah, it's a dollar figure, so we collect about $1.5 million in tuition every year, so that comes out to like $120,000 in waiver capacity, and so we were going to maximize those waivers. We'll know at year-end how much tuition we waived on our own, and if there's a need for a waiver, I believe there will be.
There's a need for an increased percentage.
So for the moment, we're recommending this item stay with that particular caveat.
With the, okay. Any comments, anyone? Okay. And the last regional or local item is to modify the funding formula for workforce development programs, one of the two different ways to calculate it. Our recommendation would be to allow the district to use whichever is higher to make sure that the money is there if there is a spike in the number of people taking advantage of workforce development programs.
Okay.
We spent a good year of time helping to educate other school districts, because when this county came up and the Superintendent came up with this idea, I found, and so did Ron at that point, the other county said, oh yeah, hadn't thought about that, and I was, Megan and I were talking before here is that there's precedent set, if you will, in some other counties in law, for example, where if the growth was over a certain percentage that they received additional dollars for capital outlay, for example, that was true in a couple of counties on the Upper East Coast, if you will, but taking that same kind of concept if we need to, that'd be something that we could look at here, but in the meantime, we really do need to still gain that support from other districts and those that have faster-growing programs. The good news was for the Department, we had no opposition to that, matter of fact, that everybody seemed to be fairly comfortable with it, it's a question of where this is, you know, show us where there's an aggregate demand or need, and that's what we're still working at.
Okay.
When I look at school board members and school boards from across the state, I find that there is a disconnect with career and technical. I found this to be the case several years ago when I was out lobbying for us to change the name from, to Technical College, and was doing a random survey of what we have, 47 technical colleges across the state as to who was, you know, in favor and who had gone on their own and made that decision, and I found by and large, when I called them, they didn't realize they'd even voted on changing the name, some of them, and they really didn't seem to have a lot of focus on career and technical, which I think, folks, this is a big, a big thing for us in coming years because career and year is really more and more important, and when we have this wedge between college grads and non-college grads, we want to pull this, you know, together, and I think we'll have more meaningful career opportunities, new courses available and stuff, and I really think that some of the emphasis that I've seen from certain gubernatorial candidates, I think, make it implicit that we look at career and technical this year and have something positive and something that we can use in our legislative platform in regard to career and technical education.
No, I agree, and I think that the sentiment around the state is starting to get more of a focus on CTE finally because there is a major disconnect. I guess my question is, is there any way that, from a pilot program or anything else that can help expand it, or any resistance that you're sensing from Tallahassee to go, to move forward?
On the, on the calculation or on the funding?
Funding, really.
There really hasn't been, again, it was one of those things that, you know, we were aware of this at our April 17 Board meeting, was that we were moving along relatively well with increased funding, obviously until the Parkland tragedy occurred, and that put the skids on a lot of stuff. Next year is a new year, and as I mentioned, we'll have a new governor, and I frankly have been heartened on hearing some of the campaigns going on, that they are highlighting career and technical education, and hopefully that, I was going to say that those who are highlighting will get elected, but you can only have one. But I'm hoping that they...
Yes, exactly.
But I think that's the way to go, and we'll have that, and again, with the support that we've had with the Florida Chamber in particular.
Good stuff. Any other comments? Okay.
If you all have, think of anything, obviously, this is a living, breathing document, these are the priorities that we're working on right at this point, but certainly if staff or if Board come up with things that they really would like to see added, that as a local issue in particular, so I'm referring to, please let us know.
We talked about this earlier, and I think this ends up falling into more of the state component, but I think pilot programs oftentimes help get that moving, and I don't know that we have any structure to do that, but it's the transportation component with education, especially as expansion of school choice goes forward, and that being a massive disconnect. Are you hearing anything to address that, or any other counties focused on that?
I am hearing a lot of gnashing of the teeth from almost every school district across Florida. I will be honest, I'm not hearing much of any willingness to really do anything serious with transportation at this point. It's funding about half, I think, of a district's cost on the state average, maybe 55%, and the school choice was a big issue. The legislation that passed two years ago allowing parents to send their children to any school where there is space, we really thought we'd be hearing more on this past year, it was very quiet, to be honest with you, but at the same time, there still is a need for that, and that's not just transportation, you've got the other categoricals involved as well, special education is one that has not kept pace with costs. Save Schools was woefully behind until this year, and of course, there's a concern to make sure that this wasn't a one-year deal, that that gets continued on for the following year, but that may be something that as we get into the September, I'm sorry, the December, January period, and especially as you get through this particular budget cycle, when you do have an adopted budget and you start looking at potential programs for 19, 20, what the costs are, I always make a strong suggestion, it helps us to go into session or prior to session saying, these are the specific budget issues that we do have based upon our previous year's financial data and projected in terms, because we know what our enrollment projections are going to be, the Department has that as well, and if transportation is one that is out there glaring, or for that matter, instructional materials or any of the other categoricals, SAI, reading, reading instruction.
The list goes on.
Yeah, it does, it does, that we can pinpoint some of that, and we can certainly adjust that in our program in December, January.
Eric?
Well, I understand where you're coming, Madam Chair, and I certainly agree, this morning when we were talking about the insect, my only fear about that is, is that we run the risk of starting up a new program that costs $3 million and they give us one and a half, and then we have a deficit, and our transportation is kind of, I wouldn't say weak, they're having issues, just talking about hiring 40 drivers and, you know, expand into school choice, we may end up with, you know, 60 vacancies, and so, although I think it's a normal idea, I think that, I just don't know if this is the right time, given our current situation, as far as transportation, unfettered mandates, you know, I just, I think it's, I think it's something worth exploring, I just don't know if this is the year for it.
Okay. Todd?
So you missed this morning, I kind of got up on my soapbox and talked about the base student allocation and that we should focus our time and energy on the base student allocation, and I think sometimes when you get into these conversations that we contradict ourselves, is that if we go with a list of categoricals that we wish to have funded or funded better, and then we say, but we really want all of our money in the base student allocation, there's only X amount of dollars that the legislature is going to put into public education next year, and so I would say, as opposed to going with a list of transportation and SAI and ESE and everything else, is for us to focus on an across-the-board increase in the base student allocation, and then that allows our Board to make decisions if we wish to allocate additional funding to transportation or safety and security, but it's when those funds come from Tallahassee and all of these restricted bins, and then we turn around and go, what about the base student allocation, that we need to be clear in regards to what we're asking for, because I think sometimes the field, not just this Board, but the field of education contradicts itself when it gets before the legislature and says, please fund all these categoricals, but don't forget about the BSA. We need to be real clear about how we want our money, and that's in the least restrictive way possible.
Fair enough. Charlie?
Speaking of soap operas, I'm going to get back on...
Soap operas or soapbox?
Soapboxes.
Very different.
Well, this one's a soap opera. You know, the box I get on all the time is the automatic increases in the corporate... You know, the box I get on all the time is the automatic increases in the corporate tax credit scholarship program. And I understand the 25% increase, it was supposedly able to go from 693 million to 860 million. And next year, it'll be over a billion. And it's, there's a caveat that they have to have enough businesses wanting to do that, but last year, there was some legislation passed that gave DOAR, the list of the top 200 taxpayers, you know, any, any chance now that, you know, the people who passed the automatic 25% increase, most of them have left, you know, rolled out, maybe any changes on that or?
They, I won't say they've left. They may be changing chambers as we go through the election cycle.
Yeah, but some of them have, yeah, some of them are in the other chamber, but even that, most of them are gone.
Yeah. When we looked at that last year, and it's going to be one of the things to see what happens, we were, the projection, the data projections were that for this coming school year, that the enrollment projections for the three primary scholarships, and I'm not talking about the HOPE Scholarship at this point because that's new and we don't really know where that's going to be, but primarily for the corporate income tax scholarship, that they were not going to be hitting those numbers, that the enrollment actually has leveled off up to this point and that that 25% may or may not actually occur.
Even with the increased amount of the?
This is something we're going to need, I think, to see where the department and its data collection has to see if that does happen. But the, the argument that was given back to us was that the law is one thing, but they did not expect that those caps would be even hit. If they are, then that's a different story.
But it isn't on the enrollment caps, it's only on if they get enough money. I mean, if they get enough people, but that's why they were given that, that list of 200 vendors, I mean, 200 taxpayers, and they got $10 million to go out there and woo them. I mean, so, maybe, maybe you can give me a historical on the last, you know, 10 years of how that has worked. Maybe I'll have a better perspective of it.
We can. It changes each year, so.
Yeah, right.
It's not comparing apples to, to apples on that.
Oh, yeah, the legislation on it changes every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that 25% has been in there since 2000.
Last four, three years, three, four years.
Eleven, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Thirteen?
Eric.
One, maybe we can give her the list of 250, maybe she can woo them to the other side. But is there, is there any way, is it going to, I'm sure there's probably going to be some tweak in the Stoneman Douglas Act, you know, but I would like to see, you know, some tweaking of it to give us more autonomy on what, what safety and security looks like, you know, what, you know, that we're able to have the responsibility to determine what safety and security is. Instead of getting this mandate that you will have this here and they'll have this training and they'll do that there, which obviously is causing us a lot of, you know, angst in other areas. But I would like to see, you know, some sort of, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, some sort of flexibility in allowing us to have control over what safety and security. Because I can imagine, safety and security is different in Arcadia than it is in Miami. So, trying to, the legislature to come down, I understand that they wanted to react at that point in time, but hopefully after things settle down that they realize that, you know, that the needs, you know, in Orlando are different than the needs in Palatka. And so, you know, giving us the, the ability and trust that, hey, we want to keep the schools safe and secure and that, you know, we have to have some sort of, work to some sort of standard, but not have so many rigid qualifications or requirements.
I think you're hitting on a point that probably is one that we will want to take a look at. At this point, we do not still know, for example, how many districts across the state are going to be participating in the Guardian program. We've already got one county that I'm aware of that actually wants to participate in the Guardian program, but they will not have their guardians armed. That's, that's a tweak from what the law has. So, once we sort of get an idea.
Certainly can. The law defines a guardian as training that the individual's had. It does not talk about carrying a weapon on a campus. And so, you could nominate an employee, have them go through guardian training from the sheriff's office, which would include they have to hold a concealed weapons permit. But when they're actually on campus on a day-to-day basis, there's nothing in the act that requires them to carry a weapon.
That's interesting. Shirley.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, when all this, and I'm sure maybe DOE is going to be getting this information, who, who went which ways. Because, I mean, as we're seeing, it's, it's, it's not real easy to just open up a new police force, but yet it's expensive to hire, you know, full-time sheriffs. And I don't know, and, you know, maybe we could find out what that split is across the, the state, how many of them are, because I know even if that new constitutional amendment passes on Amendment One, I mean, cities and counties will have less money and they'll be looking at ways to cut back. But the Guardian program, I mean, you can have a law enforcement, have your own, own police force, or you can have a Guardian program. And that Guardian program says, I'm kind of, that they have to go through this training and they can be an employee. But they don't have to be law enforcement, they just have to have a weapons permit. So, they can be.
They have to go through additional training, to be honest.
Sort of.
Yeah, there's 160 hours for the training they must.
160 hours of training. So, like, they could be, well, you could just hire them off the street, but they don't have to be law enforcement.
No.
And they could work for us already, which was really the main intent of it, is that you already had these people employed and you could just convert them into a guardian.
Not regular classroom teacher.
Yes. But, but Polk County is doing something similar to this, and Polk County and Grady Judd had said that he.
I think Lake City is too.
There's about four counties right now in the midst of evaluating it.
And there's a July 1st deadline that the, the governor sent in a letter to the school districts asking the school districts to notify the Department of Education by July 1st whether or not they intend to participate. So, they can reevaluate how many districts plan to draw down funds from that pot and whether or not funds can be shifted into a different categorical.
Well, DOE is, so DOE is evaluating that, is that?
I believe DOE is the recipient of the notifications.
Okay.
From school districts on whether or not they intend to participate.
I understand the sheriff is, is training guardians for charter schools.
Yes, he is. The class started two weeks ago.
Okay, hold on a second. I know Todd, Todd.
And they don't have to be armed?
They do not. So, in our meeting with the commissioner last week, we asked for specific guidance, in fact, I asked for specific guidance in regards to the employment of guardians by charter schools, is that we are required, there's also another deadline in August in which we have to school by school talk about what option was selected. To this point, it has been a transaction between the charter schools and the sheriff. The sheriff has offered the training, the charter schools have sent employees to receive that training. The commissioner is of the opinion, at some point, the school board is going to have to authorize the Guardian program as an option for public schools in Sarasota County. And so, we're looking for some technical assistance that although we didn't select that option, that if that's an option we wish to make available to charter schools, that we will have to act in some way. But she promised to respond and she had her new director of safety and security with her. And it's not as simple as the sheriff transacting business with the charter school board and them saying this is the option. We are going to have to serve as a conduit in some way.
What was the deadline for that? Well, that was two different deadlines, school by school identifying.
There's a July 1st deadline and then there's an August 7th deadline of some sort.
Okay.
Well, unless we authorize them, they can't use them. There's, but we have to tell them by July 1 whether, oh, I guess we have to tell them whether they want to or not.
I think it's one of those things, you can hire an attorney and ask them to argue your position, is that there, there is an argument to be made that the charter school board has the right to make that. And if the sheriff makes the program available, clearly if the sheriff says no guardians within your school district, it's done. I don't know if a school district said no guardians in our district, if the sheriff and the charter school could still do a guardian program. And that's the technical assistance that we've asked for. But there is a legal argument that says, we're just speaking for our schools, they can speak for theirs.
So, I would want to know what the liability on us is if in fact, these charter schools hired a guardian.
Do we have hold harmless? I mean, you can get sued for anything, let's be serious, but there is hold harmless agreements in our contracts.
Let's get back on topic so that we can finish this up and then I'm sure.
Well, this, this particular bill and what happens in next session, I think, is going to be at the top of everyone's list. But I think it's almost a reflection of what people do, and I think there's, obviously, we're included in there, still trying to figure out what that specifically looks like. So, I just had one question on that, though, is DOE, did they amend OPAGA and update it? Because I know that was a part of the discussion at, at the workshops post-Parkland and that there were certain parameters that were very outdated as far as the standards for, for school districts. Do you know anything about that?
So, as part of the bill, the department received funding to conduct an analysis of their procedures, I think, along the lines of what OPAGA had told them they should probably be updating over the years. And so, and the next, I think they have a calendar year to procure that consulting service and have a full review of their procedures.
Okay.
For updates next session.
Thank you. Moving, Todd, go ahead.
I just want to amplify Eric's point. He talked about cleaning up of the language of the act. Currently, there are essentially two different safe schools allocation as well as the allocation for guardians. I know that the superintendents were united in the fact that we'd like that to be one pool of money allocated to school districts. And so, as you look at language simplifying of the act and then not so many different bins of money within it, just to say, here's a safe schools allocation, make the decision that's best for your counties.
This is something which I know, and, and, because Ron had talked about this as well, that the, there's a thing called the Legislative Budget Commission, which is the joint committee between the House and the Senate. They've got the authority to do that this year, and our understanding is that once we see how many of the Guardian programs and dollars are being committed, that the LBC is liable to meet, hopefully no later than next month, but at least some point during the summer, to allow whatever funds are left over from the Guardian program to be accessed by districts as you deal with your SROs or contracts with, with local law enforcement. And that was one of the issues discussed last week in Tallahassee. The School Boards Association was at the same thing, is to minimally have that one pot, have a single pot of money that districts withdraw from for either Guardian or law enforcement. And in Chapter 1006, you also have where if they wanted to, districts can also hire guards through armed, I'm sorry, through contracted services organizations as well. But then some people are doing that as a mixture. But I think the key thing is to get that one single pot. And that may be something, if you wanted us to give us direction here, to include as a recommendation back to the state organizations, even if the LBC does do that waiver this year, we can certainly look at doing that.
But even within the safe schools allocation, you've talked about combining the two allocations, but within the safe schools allocation, there's language about certain dollars can only be used for your existing SROs and the others can only be used for expansion. And so, not just combining of the two pots of money, but language as it specifically exists regarding the safe schools allocation, because essentially, there are two safe schools allocations now.
Eric? I don't know if you, did you guys have any? Okay, Eric?
I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, but we haven't had that many discussions about this. Is it possible to have a mix and match, where you have SROs and guardians or?
Yes.
Or private contractors? And so, just hypothetically speaking, if we're not able to have all of our SROs by August 13th, we would have the ability to go put guardians or, or contract the private company for the, for the gap?
Yes.
Well, okay, so.
It is authorized in Chapter 1006. I think obviously that any district wants to make sure.
But if we were going to add guardian to the mix, we'd have to notify them by July 1.
July 1st.
Okay.
And, and you also got to make sure that the sheriff offers the program.
Right.
You've got three steps. Sheriff offers the program, school board agrees to it, and then obviously, if you have an employee who's a non-regular classroom teacher, that employee also has to agree to it.
So, you need the entire enrollment of the Guardian applicants by July 1st, or is it that the program would be?
It's my understanding, it's notification of, of intent to participate.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
The hybrid.
And our attorney has taken a position that is a little bit different than yours, that the Guardian cannot be done through contracted service.
No, no, right, right.
You can contract for private security services.
Right.
But the private securities contractor does not meet the definition of a guardian.
Correct.
Yeah, no, there's three different, three different options.
I just want to make sure, I just do a check. You could have a guardian, private contractor, or SRO in any mix of those three?
The private contractor does not meet the standards of the act. You can go and hire. Manatee County went and hired private security.
Right.
It does not put them in compliance with the act.
Okay, so, so basically, it's guardian and SROs in any mix and interchange of the?
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Shirley.
But if we've got a security guard that we hired, not that we contracted out, we hired a security guard, we could put them through the Guardian program. Because I know we had talked about that when we were in session at one time.
And so, in Pasco County, the decision that they made was to not arm any of their current staff, but they created a new job description for an armed security officer. They hired them. They are not law enforcement officers, they have not gone to the academy. They are essentially hold a Class B license as a security guard. And then they went to guardian training, and that puts them in compliance with the act. They, they hired armed security, but they are employees of the district. It's not like going to CS4 or Wacken Hut. They are employees of the district.
That go through a certification under guardian by local law enforcement.
Correct.
Which has to be.
Absolutely.
And there are, and I don't, I wonder what the final tally is, because July 1st is right around the corner, but there are, it was kind of silent for a while, but I think a lot of districts, as we are too, realizing there's some deeper dive and evaluation of this. So, I think there may be more than when we talked last that we're going to be participating in it. It'll be interesting to find out. So, anything else?
On our state and regional issues?
Yep, yep, yep. No, I just went on that topic. We couldn't be here for a while.
We're recommending a couple of modifications, but otherwise, the, the BSA, and I know this is, I did not wear a red tie, but the BSA, from a, purely from a legislative standpoint, you've heard about the 47 cents per pupil increase. But within the BSA, there was still a $100 million increase that on paper does meet the increase for Florida retirement as well as for growth, as well as any changes in workload. So, de facto, our recommendation that we said, at least provide increased funding in the BSA, did meet that. It did not meet inflation. And certainly, obviously, it does not necessarily deal with anything in the way of program expansion. But I think in, in full disclosure, we need to, to acknowledge that there was a $100 million increase, and that was for those two things, the workload, the increased enrollment across the state, as well as the $54 million in the Florida retirement system increase that employers have for this coming year. The legislature also did agree to restore the calculation into the required local effort for new construction. And we're suggesting at this point that we continue to push for the BSA, especially as far as for any state program change, but mainly workload. And that's going to be as we deal with programs that we're offering in the county. And then likewise, to calculate the required effort, to go back to where we were three years ago, which is both for increase for new construction as well as increased property value. I know Ms. Goodman was at the legislative committee hearing where current Senate Appropriations Chair, I believe, pushed for that as well. And Rob Bradley was saying that they felt they really needed to go back to that. The required local effort usually makes up a good 40% of the entire funding for the FEFP. And given state revenue projections over the next two years, it's one of those things that, yes, revenues are going to be going up, but costs are also going to be going up. And parenthetically, I will add, the real cost issue legislatures having to deal with is healthcare, Medicaid funding as well in, in particular. So, our suggestion at this point is that we, we continue this as a working document and then a working statement. And then certainly, as we come back and we see what our revenue picture is for this current, our budget is for this current year, our projected revenue needs for the next year, maybe we can come up with a more of a specific, either a dollar amount or a set of recommendations on, on the BSA.
And I would agree with that. And I think you said something earlier, was about providing some data to support it so it differentiates that you're not just beating the pavement every single year, saying we want to increase, we want to increase this, but to have an illustration of where we're using money, where the categoricals can hurt us because we could use it elsewhere. we could use it elsewhere. And so I don't know if that's from a guiding standpoint from staff and if that would make more sense, it just, I think, maybe more effective. Shirley.
We can show where we actually received less in the FEFP than we did last year, had to do with when they recalculated the cost differential. Our dollars went down. We did receive less.
And there is, by the way, this year, there will be the study of the DCD. The governor vetoed it last year, this year, this year that did go through. I'm not sure how fast they'll be working on it, but I believe that...
And be careful what you ask for.
The economist team that was at UF is now University of West Florida, so it'll probably be a UWF review.
Go ahead, Todd.
They are, they are, they are an hour behind us, you're correct.
Todd.
So Vern, the idea of a tax increase as it comes to setting required local effort actually is contained in the way we do TRIM notices in this state. And so if I run for office on a platform of, "I'm not going to raise taxes," it's not my definition of what a tax increase is. That definition of a quote "tax increase" is contained in the way TRIM notices are done. And so is there conversation about the definition of a tax increase?
There will be, yes. And I think what's going to spark that, if you remember, we reported the Legislation House Bill 1279 that passed, it's got a year delay implementation, which we had strongly requested, it was just too much to deal with. Much of that bill focuses on budget and reporting of budget, and I believe that you'll see a very, I won't say exactly how it's going to turn out, but I believe you'll see a significant degree of discussion in terms of the intent of that legislation for auditing, for public transparency on budget, for TRIM notices, and then what is also currently in existence in 101015, which is your educational accountability legislation that's already there. Somehow, all of that needs to be integrated to where it's together and not piecemeal. And I'm not going to say, I don't know how it's going to turn out, but to answer your question, yes.
And those TRIM notices are very confusing for people right now when they look at them. They're saying, "This is what it would be if no changes are made, and this is what it would be if they make the changes." And they're just complicated, and people don't understand, "Oh, well, that's what it would be if you..." They're complicated to read, and we get, we don't often get a lot of people coming in here, but when we do, it's often because they misread what the TRIM notice said.
Right. And I do want to emphasize that, I think that for the, especially for the people viewing this workshop, we're not talking about increasing millage. We're talking about, and going back to where we were as to what the required local effort included. So, because originally, the TRIM notices was based on millage increases, that was viewed as being the tax increase. Now, depending upon who you talk to, sometimes the tax increase is if my tax bill just goes up because my property value got reassessed higher.
So then, no recalculation to offset that, right?
Correct, correct.
Shirley, Vern, I just tell them, I blame the county commission, and that ends the conversation. When they have a complaint about TRIM notice, I tell them to go to the county commission. They love that.
Moving along.
Yeah. We've got about five or 10 minutes here, let me, if I may. Providing for the hiring of instructional personnel as substitute teachers, we do recommend that that continue. I think we indicated to you that we kind of got, I hate to use the word blindsided, but we got blindsided by particular staff just before Parkland happened, that said, "Well, this is really an IRS issue, we can't go along." And I think it was a red herring excuse, quite frankly, because this was law in 2010, and I don't believe the federal tax code has changed a heck of a lot in that regard. So our suggestion is to continue this particular issue.
I don't know if this would fall in here, and I know that we, we don't require certified teachers to be certified to substitute, but I know, given what happened with the reporting of, there seems to be a disconnect between agencies when there is any kind of level of misconduct. And so, I don't know, by the way, I feel like there's multiple elements to strengthen. I think we did it here to focus on HR. I know I've been working with Manatee County on some other elements, but I don't know, as we reflect on that, because I think there should be some element of legislation that we can close that gap. Has there been any consideration or thought? I don't know if you even know what the heck I'm talking about, but we had, and I can tell you offline, but there just seemed to be a disconnect on reporting of misconduct or for, it's not back, I don't want to say background checks, it's not...
Florida Department of Education's professional standards does not deal with substitutes. And so our ability to use them as a tool when we talk about a substitute is different than when we hire them as a certified teacher. So it could be the same individual in the same classroom, working with the same kids, but if they're there as a substitute, even if they hold certification, they're non-certificated and they're not in that professional standards database the day we hire them as a teacher on a permanent basis, then they fall under the professional practices at FLDOE.
Much better, much more articulate than mine. But I just feel like, and I don't know that we would change the standard, but I just, I think that, again, from county to county, when you talk about, again, going back to the safety and security of kids across the state, I just feel like there's a disconnect there, and I don't know what the solution necessarily would be, and I'm not saying to add this, to require them be certified, but I just feel like there should be some required liability to the respective agency to report certain things.
We can look at that.
The other one on this priority, we're talking about instructional personnel, but now that we're hiring law enforcement officers, I know it's an issue in that community as well. Here locally, the city of Sarasota is a non-FRS employer. They can retire and come to work for us the next day. If someone retires from the sheriff's office, they're an FRS employer, and there's a waiting period. And with the shortage of officers across the state because of the mandates included in Parkland, if there was a waiver of that waiting period within FRS, it would be helpful to us, but lots of agencies across the state would benefit from that as we're trying to staff up.
That was the reason the law changed, was because of FRS. And there was somebody in north of Pasco County or something that retired as an appraiser or supervisor of elections or something, and then got a big payout in retirement, and then came back in three months and started all over again. And most of these people that we're talking about are not going to come back into FRS, they're not going to get those benefits anyway. So I think that's really the distinction here, is that they're not looking for the benefits, they're looking for part-time work. And when they're out a year, and it takes a full year for us to leave them to gainfully employing them as a substitute, they have found something else to do. And they say to us, "Not, not interested anymore, I'm doing, you know, something else." So it's really, and particularly with the situation now with substitutes, it's particularly important.
Well, maybe, I think, when you hit on, you know, maybe they would be more able to swallow it if, in fact, they said that you can rehire them, but they can't go back into FRS.
That's the issue.
That, you know, we'll go, "Okay."
Would that work for the law enforcement component?
Well, the rules of FRS go for any FRS employer, but there is language about you can't earn a second pension. And so the idea that you sit out, I don't know why you're sitting out, because when you come back, you're not earning a pension anyway.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Question for clarification, we will be glad to add law enforcement to this, do you want law enforcement to edit as a part-time or full-time?
Full-time.
Or part-time? Could be both.
So yes.
Yes, yes and yes.
Next proposal is to streamline and reduce the amount of time state required to bring it in line with every Student Succeeds Act. We did make progress in 495, particularly as it pertained to the advanced placement exams, and of course, and we would suggest at this point that this item sort of drop off at this point. Modify the waiver for certain special education students who will be exempt for state assessment. Again, this was something which I know was an issue here, and I spent a good deal of time with staff and with board on it, but the department is, at this point, given current department leadership, is absolutely resistant to doing any blanket waivers. We can do individual student waivers, but we cannot do blanket waivers, and they still believe the case by case is the best to go. What we're going to suggest is that, if you wish, we can continue having this on our proposal, but to set it to where we're really looking at trying to get perhaps better information to make a stronger case for blanket waivers. And I'm going to say, parenthetically, as I said, we'll have a new administration next year, and that might possibly lead to perhaps a change, but I can't, we can't count it right now.
We can do that, we can certainly do that, because it is such an ordeal for these parents to go through a waiver, and it's for one year only. And most, I think they had, at one point, when we were looking at this, given 13 universal waivers for the child for the rest of school. And we know, at our Oak Park, there are many schools, I mean, many students who can't take these tests, and it takes days and days of oral and laborious effort on the part of the teacher, and it's cruel.
And the last item is strengthening teacher standards and curriculum for VPK programs. I would like to say we can declare victory, sort of, in the sense that House Bill 1091 by Erin Groll passed, that's the intent to do that. It's really going now in the ballpark with the department to see how well they follow through. And a suggestion that we really have at this point is go ahead and delete this item. But at the same time, we'll keep an eye on it, depending upon what the department does do. This, again, is something in December, January, if the board and staff feels they've not done anything to our satisfaction, we can certainly put it back in. And I know that Representative Groll and others will probably be glad to truly push, because this was her issue. But otherwise, that legislation is supposed to take care of our concern.
Okay. Any other add-ons, thoughts? For the good of the call?
Of course. I would just like to say thank you again for all your work, you know, I guess, when you look at return on investment, that 500,000 definitely stands out, but also the explanations on where we stand on some of these issues, I mean, to me, is valuable information. And I know when Todd was up there, you know, Ron took him in, "You need to talk to this guy." And I understand that that conversation that you had with the Speaker Cochrane made a difference. And, you know, if it wasn't for, you know, Ron, that wouldn't have taken place. And, you know, it really, really has helped us, and I appreciate, you know, what you've done for us, and thank you.
Appreciate that.
I'll echo that, thank you very much, I do appreciate it, and I think that, especially keeping us focused on the timeline and concise and being focused on Sarasota items and the reality of getting them.
And I hope, Bridget, that you and I can work on a platform that your association as well can, so that we all are on the same page and working together on this this year. I think it would benefit us both. But I just hope that we don't lose sight of this, because for many years now, we've, "Oops, it's time to get a platform together." Maybe it's really too late. And I know that if I go see, you know, a senator or a House member, that I have things that we can, that we can all talk about.
Right, and I think it's before session, too. I mean, they have to be meeting.
And it makes, it makes sense, and if we can only get to the staff member who, because of term limits now, has sometimes a greater strength and flexibility and longevity, I think that makes good sense as well. But we just need to keep our eye on the ball, and thank you for your effort. Megan, we're really thrilled to have you. I know you worked with Kim, and when she was in the governor's office, and now she's with Gray Robinson, and so we think that bodes well for us as well. So thank you very much, and you, with your legal background and so forth, I think you're a wonderful addition to the team. And Vern, as always, thanks very, very much, and thank you for all your efforts in the last year, we really, really appreciate it.
So 58 minutes on the state, anything on the federal for the last two?
We've got...
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Tomorrow, the Senate Health Education Labor Commission Committee takes up its version, which I haven't seen yet, of the Perkins vocational bill. That's excellent news, because maybe we'll finally get something passed in the way of reauthorization that will also strengthen the relationship with higher education. The House Appropriations Committee is dealing with budget overall, there's no budget cuts. That's not to say we couldn't find reduced funding, because if you keep funding level, the funding level, and there's more kids, then its proportion might change. But there are no recommended cuts, there's a slight increase in special education, which we're heartened with, that's a House version, which they're trying to move. And I think that the Senate does stay in session during August, as has been announced by the Majority Leader, that they'll get a budget out come August. The one thing that we are looking at still is the children's health education or health program. The proposed rescission cut is reserve fundings, we are told, but there is a concern that if there were more children eligible, would there be the dollars to help them with healthcare? But otherwise, ESSA is, pretty much as is. Florida's plan to this hour still has not been approved. We're waiting to hear from the secretary, and I think we're, all things considered, I think we're in pretty good shape federally at this point.
Very good.
Last 30 seconds in the U.S.
All right, thank you so much, thank you, it was great to see you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Look forward to, are there any, Eric? I have not adjourned.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I just, there is member comments on the agenda, so unless there's any member comments, otherwise, we can adjourn. Wow, we're adjourned, that never...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.